Good morning and welcome to the January 27, 2014 workshop of the Orlando City Council. So it's a big week as we embark on a new era for the Citrus Bowl. We've been doing a lot of design work and a lot of talk for a long time about reconstructing the Citrus Bowl and this is the week that we move forward. So on Wednesday at 10 o'clock, we will have an official kickoff to the demolition. The Monster Jam event was held Saturday night and was the last official event held in the old Florida Citrus Bowl and we look forward to hosting the Florida Classic in the new Florida Citrus Bowl in November. So there's a lot of work to be done between now and then, but I want to make sure everybody was updated on what the reconstruction is going to entail and what the design is. So Alan Johnson and Brent are going to, from SC Advisors, are going to present an update and overview and then Rebecca and Chris are going to give an update on the venue's financing plan. Alan?
Morning Mayor, Commissioners and Audience Members. Thank you for allowing us to have this time to bring you up to date on these important projects that we're working on. We're going to have our first presentation is going to be by Brent Dahlbeck, our project executive, who's going to talk about the design update, some renderings update and the construction update. So we're excited about where we are, where we're headed and looking forward to where we're going to be in November. Brent?
Thank you Alan. Good morning Mayor, Commissioners.
Morning Brent.
Okay. Last time we met was in August of last year and we, obviously as the Mayor mentioned, had quite a bit of progress over the last five months or so, but really the focus has been on the design and finalizing the design. We know that we have a very compressed schedule for construction. We have to be ready for the Florida Classic in November of next year. So it was very critical that we get the design right because we have a limited amount of time to go back and make any changes that we need to make. So since our meeting last time, we have released four more design packages with the final release being in the middle of this month. It was actually issued on the 15th of January. And that was really the interior fit out of club spaces, operations areas, kitchens, team facilities and things like that. So we'll actually show you a few renderings in a minute here of the main concourse and some of our club areas. We have submitted and have secured the building permit for the demolition, underground work and structural work. So that was secured on the 17th of January. We will be submitting the permit application for the balance of the work probably within the next week or two. So that will be the interior build out that I mentioned just came out in the middle of this month. And then obviously we'll continue to revise the drawings and support the construction with any drawing revisions that may be necessary. So let's go ahead and get into some of our renderings at this point that came out in that last package. This is kind of the, gives you an idea of the color scheme and some of the signage concepts on the main concourse. This would be your typical concession stand, a little bit bigger picture look. This is actually looking at the west concourse just off of Rio Grande. You can see much wider, more efficiently flowing concourses. These are all new buildings on this concourse as we're demolishing all of the lower bowl in the current stadium. The group that you're looking at right now are the cooking concessions, which is why they have the louvers over the top. Looking at the, this is actually the north end zone. You can kind of see the palm trees on Church Street over on the right. Again, this concourse is wide open. This would become access to the field itself for stages or any performances during halftime for the football games or load in and load out of some of our other events at the stadium. You can also see in these renderings that we've begun to develop the signage concept for the stadium. And I think we presented last time some of the color schemes of the four different quadrants and you start to see that being incorporated into the signage of the stadium now. Moving on to the club spaces. This is the latest rendering for the enclosed clubs. If you remember, we have about 20,000 square feet of enclosed clubs split up between the two sidelines, 10,000 and 10,000 each. So this is a large space. It supports about 1,000 people for the top tier club seats. And then we also, on each side of the enclosed space, which you can see in the background of the rendering, are open air clubs. These are, there are four of them. There are about 7,500 square feet each. So again, that would be about another 3,000 club seat holders. So on the sidelines alone, we're looking at about 5,000 club seats. And then, as you're well aware, in the competitive scope, we added another club in the south end zone that we haven't gotten to this level of detail on just yet. So where we are in the guaranteed maximum price status is we are working based on some of the drawings that have been issued since the last meeting we had with you and have had Turner start to give us the GMP estimate. We're still negotiating that right now. We are targeting that that be finalized by the end of February. So by next update, we'll be able to give you the exact number of what that GMP is. So we continue negotiations with Turner, with the assistant of our design folks. On construction, we had actually started some of the prep work for the demolition back in November. The majority of this work was underground storm piping, underground electrical conduits, relocation of some of the electrical transformers so that we can be ready for today. And we've mobilized quite a few of our contractors. Our owner's team consisting of SC Advisors, Hunt Construction and Orlando Venues has actually mobilized into construction trailers on site, as has Turner and their demolition contractor. The demolition contractor, as some of you may have seen at the event yesterday, or Saturday, they've actually brought in all their equipment for demolition and you'll see that more evident on the, in the groundbreaking ceremony that's being held on Wednesday at 10:00 a.m. So we'll actually have some of the pieces of equipment set up out there, ready to start demolition immediately following that event. The demolition itself, we're targeting approximately 45 days to bring down all the existing seating bowls, the existing buildings on the concourses, including the mezzanine that's out there right now. That does not include any of the suite level, press level or the upper bowl and upper concourse. Some of those areas will be demolished from an interior perspective, but not the structure itself. The new seating bowl, we'll begin to see come out of the ground in March. We'll start foundations a few weeks before that, but you'll actually start to see some of the structure go up in around the March timeframe. And then the south end zone has a lot of the team facilities and the operations areas. So that's really the critical part to get started because those will take a little longer than some of the other areas. So we'll begin constructing some of those facilities later on this spring. So you'll start to see masonry walls coming out of the ground and some of those concessions and restrooms that we showed you on the previous renderings. This is the rendering of the completed stadium. This is our latest design. You've probably seen this in some of the media releases and it's actually on quite a few signs around the stadium right now, but this gives you a pretty good idea of where we're at in the current design. Some things that have changed from the last time that we met were, had to do with the competitive scope. The most evident in this rendering here is the permanent seating in the south end zone and the addition of the large scoreboard that you see in the foreground of the rendering. So you're starting, we're starting to see some of those competitive scope items that were approved back in November being incorporated into the design. Okay, with that, I'll turn it back over to Alan to speak about Tinker Field.
Thank you Brent. And I just want to say what a great asset Brent and SC Advisors and the owner's team is to assist us in this project and keeping us going and on task. And we do have a great team working on this. And one of the things I still say after working monster trucks on Saturday, I told people, remember this, what you see today because in November, you won't remember what it looked like. You'll see a whole new stadium from inside and outside. And that brings us to what we had to think about and work with with our neighbor, Tinker Field or other asset. One of the things that the design of the Florida Citrus Bowl had to do is expand its footprint in order to accommodate the new vertical transportation on both the east side and the west side. And thus it cut into the size of the outfield fences and Tinker Field in center field and in right field, significantly enough, 80 feet or more on the right field side, which would make it almost an awkward sized stadium that would not be able to play normal minor league baseball or baseball of that kind. So we started looking at the options we may have for that. And this is that west side view that you're going to see when we finish the stadium for the Citrus Bowl. And again, we want to show you the elevation, what's going to be there and how it was impacted by the location of the current Tinker Field. And a couple of the reasons why we looked at Tinker is we have several issues over there that are critical path issues or life safety issues that have been hitting us every time we have an event over there. Some of that infrastructure was built in the 1916, sorry, 1916, including the plumbing and the sanitation and sewer lines were built in the early 20s and have been down there. They have failed. In many cases, we don't use those restrooms for events because they're just not, it's not feasible to use them. They overflow so quickly because of the capacity and the situation we have over there. Again, we talked about the outfield structure, the vertical transportation that's on the west side extending into the area that we needed to. And again, it's a nice view of the west side of the Florida Citrus Bowl that we have. And we want to make sure that view was, you know, appropriate for the neighborhood, but also appropriate for what we have. Again, I'm talking about some of the things, the seating structure, team structures, light and light bowls, electrical system, HPA system, outfield wall. All these items carry a significant price increase for us to repair or replace. In most cases, it's replacement because we cannot find pieces to repair. The seats, whenever we have a seat that's broken or a section that's broken, we actually have to take other sections down from higher up and replace those seats with it because the seats aren't being manufactured anymore, nor are the parts for those. Again, this kind of is an odd shot, but shows the fence line and how, if you look at the picture there, it impacted in right field and in center field by coming in close and shortening those outfield lines and outfield fences. So we started looking at the assets we have out there and the land that we do have out there and how we could still have a multipurpose baseball type stadium, but also for other events out there. And we have McCracken Field, which is just to the south of the location of the current Tinker Field. And we started looking at how we could make that a useful, purposeful baseball field as well as, again, multipurpose. We started looking with our local architects, Rhodes Brito, which is a part of our HNTB team on the Florida Citrus Bowl, local minority architectural firm. And we asked them to start looking at how we could do that and schedule to, you know, make that work. And we design, have design that could be completed in June and construction could be completed in the spring of 2015. And some of the components of this, this is not just a Band-Aid. This is just not going over to McCracken. I think we've got a rendering here in just a second. And not just, you know, putting a few things over there nice. This is a covered seating precast, covered seating for 500. We have an operations building that will include concessions, restrooms, operational areas, equipment storage, could also be converted to locker rooms down the road. We will have a new infield playing surface over there to make that there, you know, appropriate for the baseball. And then of course, we'll have new field fencing, a new scoreboard and new lighting over there that would make that, again, an appropriate field for that function. And this is our rendering of it, showing you the, in the top left corner there where the stands would be with the covered area. Just behind that would be the concession stands and the field house and the restrooms. And then the opposite end would be the scoreboard, new video board out there that would help us. And again, the new lighting. Again, opening up the former Tinker site for us to have other activities there as well as giving us a great view of our stadium, but still having a purpose for baseball and other activities. And again, we have several hundred other activities that occur on those fields now on Tinker and McCracken. And we're very proud of those events because just as long as we have baseball, we also have concerts, festivals that really appeal to a wide assortment of our community. And that is the end of our presentation. We'd be happy Brent and I and our whole team here to take any questions that you may have.
Thank you Alan and Brent. And just one thing I would add on the Tinker discussion is the way the grandstands are configured, they would be, you could add to them. So if there was discussion again about a single A minor league baseball team or something and we needed to have 3,000 seats, it could be accomplished.
Yes, sir. And I just put that slide back up there showing we go down the left field and right field lines and adds seats up there in capacity. Okay. Commissioner Sheehan?
Thank you Mayor. And Alan, Tinker Field is a historic asset and, you know, a lot of people don't know the story of Tinker Field. And is there any way during the renovations to put, you know, like a history exhibit on it? Because I think that would be a really important, I mean, if we're going to have, I hate to take something historic and move it, but if we're going to have to do that, why not really talk about the history and celebrate it and give something back to the community in terms of, you know, even if we have to dig up the home plate and put it back over there or something like that, so we have a piece of the old Tinker Field and then actually celebrate the history. I know Mr. Tinker, you know, was buried in Greenwood, an unmarked grave. I mean, he's a hero and, you know, and people in the community raised money to buy him a proper headstone. So I think it's something that should happen in this community, you know, to celebrate the history.
I agree Commissioner, 100%. We could also move some of the clay over to the new field. Or if we decided we wanted to leave that area still called Tinker Field and, you know, use that and memorialize that, the existing site. So I just kind of proposed Tinker McCracken because I thought it would still be the baseball aspect of, certainly we need to memorialize and recognize the contributions of Joe Tinker to our community and that would be done either at location.
I think baseball players, you know, they're going to love the facility and I think, you know, it should become Tinker McCracken then, just my own personal, you know, opinion of it. You don't want to make a baseball stadium a field and, you know, call it Tinker Field. I mean, the man played baseball, so let's celebrate, you know, what he did.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Stewart?
Thank you. Along the same lines, I think we talked briefly. One of the things I have recommended for four, five, six years is the idea that we have the ability to rename the field, anything you want to call it. And my general thought is to call it Tinker Field at McCracken Park, as opposed to kind of to do two names and kind of quite figure out what it is. Adding some additional amenities over there on the McCracken Field side, create a park environment there. Do what we talked about before, which is to physically pick up the home plate, move it over there. And then the other thing I mentioned, I talked to Byron about it, was that when Atlanta decided they were going to build a new Turner Field, what they actually did was they put surface parking on the old baseball field, the field that Hank Aaron hit his 714th homerun on. And they literally went and drew a diamond in the baseball, over drew a diamond actually where it was, actually on the, on the surface parking. And so people could walk to stand right where home plate was and stand right where Hank Aaron hit his homerun. And then on the back wall, they had actually tagged where the homerun went. So you had this feeling that, that history did occur there, but you also had this feeling that it was a precursor to another history with Turner Field. It was really kind of a neat connection between the two. And so my idea was doing that. And I mentioned some other things to Byron about other amenities I'd recommend that you do. The challenge that we have, as you know, somebody had called me, you know, unfortunately there's only a few people that actually know the answer to this question in Orlando and I happen to be one of them. 240 feet is not appropriate even for a little league baseball field.
But you could hit one out.
Well, your son could hit one foul, smart aleck.
Oh.
That was fair.
Ouch. But the new standard for just a small 11 and 12 year old is 245 feet for tournament play. So, I mean, we're really kind of stuck into where we are. So if you scale everything back down and then go back and take the stands and rebuild those, you're better off starting with something fresh. And then I agree with Commissioner Sheehan, there's a couple monuments that are there we ought to take and take advantage of. It's just supposed to be some stuff that we can really do to celebrate Joe Tinker and his contribution to baseball and the contribution to here. So the style, I saw the style. I'll tell you what, it was kind of a fun thing this past weekend. I had a chance to be over at the Amway Center and there is a postcard. Is that what you guys are using as your inspiration?
Yes, sir.
There's a postcard of the original Tinker Field prior to that, which is a neat inspiration to have this kind of classic look that was there when Joe Tinker played. It wasn't 500 seats, it was a little bit larger than that, but it wasn't more than 1,000. But the idea of creating that kind of nostalgic look right there with the expansion, I think would be really something special. You're not going to get a lot of double A teams and single A teams here because you've got to have a larger capacity. But you'll be able to put high school baseball there and some preliminary high school tournament games there. And when they come there, they'll know that something special's kind of happening there, which I think is kind of a fun thing to do. So I'm at your disposal to actually bring out my little league rulebook and tell you what the actual distances are, if you'd like to know that. But I think that we can be sensitive to the growth that we have needed and be sensitive to the history as well.
Those are great suggestions. Thank you Commissioner. Commissioner Gray?
Thank you Mayor. Alan, thanks to you and your team for the presentation. My question on Tinker is kind of what are next steps and when do we start talking economics? Cost to build, cost to maintain, et cetera.
Rebecca will assist, not part of this program.
It was not a plan. I promise. It was not a plan.
Well, obviously we investigated the cost of doing this before we brought it to you, just to be sure that we were not suggesting something that was out of, out of our ability to deliver. Because of a number of factors, we have some funding that was left over from the infrastructure portion, the CRA funded portion of the Amway Center. And so we are able to fund these improvements from that. I can transfer it and support this project. I believe that the estimates are pretty preliminary at this time, but our target budget that, you know, we're going to work to, because we really don't have the ability to do too much more, is $3 million. And so we will, we will take the $3 million that remains in the Amway Center infrastructure account and move that over to the, you know, to the, to Tinker McCracken. I just thought of, I misspoke. That was not provided by the CRA. It's provided essentially from city owned land indirectly where the old Amway Arena sat. So it's essentially recycling the cost of that land and moving it over there. So it is not a CRA supported item. It's a city land asset supported item.
Commissioner Stewart?
Yeah, Alan, one other thing, on several occasions, I've gotten questions about the work that we did in the last two or three years at Citrus Bowl and how salvageable is that? Their first question obviously is about the turf and is it, are we going to be able to put that back in the same spot? Salvageable and, because I guess we invested a million dollars just in the turf itself and then I guess we had $9 million of other investments that we made. Of that generally speaking, in the whole scope of the project, it's relatively small, but it is important in terms of being able to recapture or salvage some of those items that we did. So tell me a little bit about that.
Yes, sir Commissioner. The field itself did cost over a million dollars, but the carpet itself that's on top was about $300,000. All the other work was the infrastructure, the drainage that goes underneath the field to make it, to make it work. So the, really the new investment, if we decided not to keep the same carpet and protect it, which we're evaluating as a construction team, we believe it's about $500,000 to protect it during the construction process, but about $300,000 to replace it. So it may be more viable for us to replace it, which from my point of view, gives us another eight to 10 years of new carpet. So we're leaning toward at this point repurposing the existing carpet, either on one of the locations we've talked about, where Tinker used to be and use that over there, or on McCracken in some form or fashion, or in one of our parks. And then get the new carpet there and let the construction team do what they need to do to protect the infrastructure. Everything else that we tried to do up there is going to stay, the sport lights that we did, that was a big piece of it to relamp over there, some of the waterproofing we did. The concession stands that we added underneath the ramps, unfortunately those areas will be taken away, but the equipment will be saved and repurposed back into the project. We're, a couple areas we're going to lose is the concrete that we tried to make even underneath. Again, we're going to have to replace that. That's unfortunate, but that is going to make it a nice smooth surface when we finish with this new project. But everything else we're trying to reuse, repurpose, save and keep as much as we can.
Is there a value in the field? I guess I'm always kind of partial to the fact that Edgewater High School really only has one field. And having seen a couple of those other fields in the community where they have multi-events on the same football field. Is there a value of that to Orange County schools that we can recoup some of that $300,000 out of? I mean, is it worth 50 or 60 or $100,000 to try to sell that to what they would have to go spend 300,000 or $400,000 on to accomplish?
I'd have to ask our consultant, but one of the things I've heard is that once you pull it up, it's based on seams and how they seam it together, it's very difficult to get exactly matched for a competitive field. But for our purposes over there as a festival field, it might not be, it needed to be as straight and line. So we'll explore all options, sir. You know, we're not, we're not done on that yet, but we do want to repurpose it in some form or fashion.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you Alan. Rebecca?
Today we are going to have some exploration of the bond issues that are going to be coming up to support the venues. This is sort of a long time coming and I'm pleased today that we're going to move forward with the first issue of contract TDT from the first through four cents, calculated from the first through five cents of the county's tourist development tax. But let's take a look back. Back in 2007, we, we, you enacted the interlocal agreement and it contained in that interlocal agreement was two, were two revenue streams. The first revenue stream that we used was the contract six cent revenues as defined within the interlocal. And that was half of the six cent. And there was an arrangement for the first two years to go directly to the tourism industry to bolster our marketing campaign here for Orlando as a destination with Visit Orlando. And then is being paid back over 10 years, over 10 installments, back into the portion of the tourist development tax that comes to the city for the benefit of the Amway Center. If you recall, this six cent is limited to two purposes and two purposes only. That is to support facilities for professional sports franchises or to do tourism marketing. That's the only two purposes that we can use this six cent to accomplish our projects. We issued those six cent bonds in 2008 and we are continuing to service those bonds from the stream that comes through the interlocal agreement for the Amway Center. The other stream that we had is called contract TDT revenues. This source is really from the first through four cents, but calculated from the first through five cents. The reason why the fifth cent cannot be a source is that it too has a limited purpose and these projects do not qualify to be spending the fifth cent. But we do calculate the amount that comes to us from the first through four cents based on the total that the county receives in the first through five. We receive everything over what's called a base amount. That base amount started at a particular point and each year grew by 2%. After first filling the county's reserves to their appropriate levels, then we began to get flow from the contract TDT. And we got one payment in 2009 for roughly $9.6 million. However, at the time that I received that, we knew there was a major, that, by the way, that payment for 2009 doesn't come to us until January, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, this was for fiscal 2008 and it came to us January of 2009. But at that point, we already knew we had a fairly major economic disturbance and saw that in the first three months of the fiscal year, there was a significant downturn in tourism activity. And so we did not move forward with issuing any bonds at that particular time, even though we had we had a portion of the revenue coming to us. This particular bond issue is going to be addressing the Citrus Bowl, the Performing Arts Center, and the soccer stadium, and we'll go into that in a little more detail. The TDT, contract TDT revenues, and by the way, the county has requested that we refer to this as contract TDT revenues so that we do not confuse the investment public out there between the difference between senior lien tourist development tax bonds and these bonds. They're very different. Their underlying credit, all the technical aspects of these issues are different. So we refer to this as contract TDT instead of just, or contract TDT revenues instead of TDT revenues. The Citrus Bowl received $140 million plus a cost escalator provision if the projects did not get moving forward fairly immediately. And then in this last amendment, they received an additional $12 million for what was referred to in the previous presentation as competitive scope. This is the scope that Florida Citrus Sports Field felt was necessary to put them in a good position to be able to go out and market the stadium for additional events over and above what we currently have. The Performing Arts Center had $130 million of tourist development tax, plus the escalator for Stage Two, which was put in the interlocal in the summer of 2012, and then plus an additional $25 million for Stage Two that was in the last interlocal amendment that you recently approved. And then finally, the soccer stadium, which was also in that particular amendment to the interlocal. The city's going to issue contract TDT bonds to finance the construction of the Citrus Bowl, the Performing Arts Center, and the soccer stadium. The county's going to provide the contract TDT revenues to pay the debt service on these bonds. So essentially, we're the issuer, but we're not the source, the primary source of debt payment for these bonds. As I indicated before, the county began transferring contract TDT revenues for fiscal 2008 in January of 2009. And since then, we have received a total of $22.4 million on the Performing Arts Center Stage One from contract TDT revenues that has flowed to us in the last couple of years. And actually, recently, we received $11.7 million on the 15th of January for the fiscal 2013 year. In the interlocal agreement, the city and the county was required, were required, I'm sorry, the city and the CRA were required to set aside a $25 million, what's called CRA reserve. It was funded $10 million from the city and $15 million from the CRA. Under the interlocal, the CRA is required to refill this reserve from what's called residual capacity. And any residual capacity that we use from the CRA is reimbursable in a later year from contract TDT revenues. So it's really a loan where we're sort of fronting the money for that debt, but it will come back to us in later years. In addition, the county will refill half of each draw that may be taken from the CRA reserve up to an aggregate maximum of $12.5 million. That was included in the 2012 amendment to the interlocal. Any other city or CRA funds that are used to pay debt service, to refill the reserves or anything else, will be reimbursable from this revenue stream. So there will not be a permanent spending obligation for the city. It's simply a temporary spending obligation. Because of the additional funds for the competitive scope, along with what we estimate the escalation will be, we will issue bonds to produce proceeds of $167 million for the Citrus Bowl. So that was a total of $27 million additional as a result of cost escalation and the additional $12 million that we got in this last amendment. For DPAK, if you recall, when we did Stage One, there were guarantees of tourist development, contract TDT that the city made. And so when we do these bonds, we're going to take out that guarantee. We're essentially going to fund the amounts that are necessary to essentially take that guarantee out. And we're sitting right now at about a balance of roughly 22, I'm sorry, $31 million approximately on that. We will also issue a certain amount of Stage Two funding so that we can do the initial design process that needs to be done for Stage Two and all the pre-construction activities that need to be done in Stage Two, which have to be done this year, leading up to the deadline in the interlocal for the $25 million contribution early in January of 2015. And then finally, we'll issue the $20 million that's necessary to construct the soccer stadium from the contract TDT. The size of our bond issue is going to be $231 million, plus the funding of several other aspects, liquidity reserve, debt service reserve, our cost of issuance, and capitalized interest that we will have to help support the first year or two of the bonds. Our final maturity on these bonds will be 2045. The estimated maximum annual debt service for these bonds are $16 million. And the underwriting team that we have is a team of Bank of America Merrill Lynch and Citi with co-managers from Jefferies, JP Morgan, Stiefel, Nicholas, Morgan Stanley, Rice, and Cabrera, the last two of which are MBE firms. We expect to sell these bonds, to price these bonds, sometime in the February-March timeframe. We hope to move forward either late in February or early in March to get these bonds priced. And they'll have our typical delay to closing, which usually is anywhere from one to two months to get to closing. The primary repayment source, as I indicated before, is the contract TDT revenues. But it's important to note, because of the nature of the ability, and we've seen this, where we have contract TDT revenues and then we don't have them because of some type of economic disturbance, it's not a credit-worthy source. In other words, it's not a source which the market will take as a reasonable amount of credit for loaning the money. And so we initially, in 2007, the county felt that the growth in our CRA would be sufficient for the CRA to support these bonds on their own. But as you know, we had a significant downturn in the CRA as well, and so we do not have the capacity in the CRA to provide the support that was originally envisioned for these bonds. So to get this done, city credit support is going to be necessary. First, we have to achieve a credit that's significant enough and sufficient enough for them to be able to even sell the bonds. It's got to be, you know, people don't loan money thinking that there's a problem with the source of repayment. And I guess I would characterize this as I have in the past. This is sort of like a teenager going out and purchasing a car. They have a job. They have a repayment source, but they have not developed sufficient credit. And so they have to have their dad cosign their car note. This is essentially the same thing that we are doing. We also have to achieve a minimum credit rating or a maximum interest cost on these bonds in the interlocal, and it requires for the city in general to support the bonds to be able to achieve that. Importantly, I wanted to present to you today, clearly present to you today, the sources of funding and the order in which those sources would support this debt. And as we've talked several times, the contract TDT revenues from the county is the primary source, and that includes $11.7 million we received this in January. We're going to take that and put it into the debt service fund to be able to service the bonds. We also can accumulate prior-year surplus contract TDT revenues. So if we have more revenues coming in than the debt service in any one given year, we can hold that extra in the debt service fund for 10 years. And so as a result, we have, we can have a great year, and then if we have a little bit of a downturn, we can go and use the surplus from the previous years. We have the CRA reserve, the $25 million, and that includes refills from the CRA if the CRA has additional and unneeded funding for any of the other programs they have, and then by the county, up to $12.5 million. We then have the debt service reserve fund, which is equal to approximately $8 million to add to this stream. And then we then would go to city covenant revenues, but these are reimbursable, as I indicated, as are any contributions from the CRA to service the debt. And this is just a graphic to kind of show you how this works. We take that first payment source, the contract TDT revenue and the liquidity account, and we take that and put it into the debt service fund. If that's adequate, then we're done. If not, then we step down to the second source, and that would be our contract TDT revenue surplus fund, anything that would be left over or not used to redeem bonds. Then the third is the CRA reserve fund. And in the CRA reserve fund, we would take money from that and, as we indicated before, reimburse half of it, up to $12.5 million from the county, and half of it from the CRA if available. And then the fourth payment source would be the debt service reserve account. And then if we're still not done, then we would come to the city for a loan to continue to service the debt. Right now, if you add up all those reserves that I listed, you come to $70.2 million of reserves before anything would come to the city. And of course, at the city, we maintain a number of reserves that could be accessed for this temporarily in the event that we needed to do that. But if you take that and divide it by the maximum annual debt service, we would have to have a disturbance of 4.4 years in this revenue stream before it would ever come to some kind of a loan from the city. And so, you know, that, we have done a number of scenarios to kind of test that. And the decline scenarios, we use both the decline that we had after 9/11 and 2001, and we also used the decline in 2008, mid-2008. We modeled that, essentially replicated that in today's numbers, and neither scenario even results in a draw on the CRA reserve or for city revenues to pay debt service. So we have plenty of protection here, and we would anticipate that, you know, this is sort of a construct to help us to market the bonds, but the chances are remote that these bonds would ever need a loan from the city. And I think that, just to be fair, I'm going to do the flip side. We spent a lot of time talking about sort of the negative that might happen. Let's talk about the positive. This is a chart that shows with TD, with contract TD, or with TDT growth rate at 3%, we could pay these bonds off in 14 years, 16 years early. With 4%, in 11 years. With 5%, in nine years. And with 6%, in eight years. And in the last two years, we've had 6% growth in this revenue stream. So we believe that essentially, we will have actually a very, a much shorter time, that this is going to be outstanding because the debt service availability is going to be such that we can pay the bonds off very early. A couple of other things that you've been considering along the way is that because CRA's credit support is involved in these bonds, we require that the soccer stadium be added to the CRA redevelopment plan, and that's been submitted to you, and you've already seen that. There's a redevelopment plan amendment, and there's the CRA trust fund ordinance that's coming before you. There's no CRA funding at this time for the soccer stadium. We'll also, on February 10th, have a second reading of the CRA trust fund ordinance that's required by law. And then we'll also have the city and the CRA resolutions authorizing the CRA's covenant to budget appropriate to refill the reserve as one resolution, and then approving the city and the CRA interlocal agreement regarding the CRA's residual capacity. Because technically, that has to be passed to the city for us to pass it to the debt service fund. And so we have the mechanics of that relationship spelled out in the interlocal agreement, and I believe you've been, all been briefed on that. And then also, we'll bring the authorizing resolution for the bonds to the city as well at that particular time. So are there any questions?
Okay. Thank you, Rebecca. That was excellent in terms of simplifying a very complicated process. Commissioner Stewart?
Yeah, I'm not sure simplifying is the right word. It's very complicated, and when you blow through it in about 15 minutes, it sounds like you speak gobbledygook. But I understand kind of where we are. Here's kind of where I'm looking at this, and I guess I'm calling it what I would call a practical exposure to us. Not a definitive exposure and not a minimum exposure, but what would be the practical exposure that would happen? So if I understand it correctly, we're getting $11.4, $11.7 million this past year. We assume zero growth. I don't, and all of us know that that's probably not practical, but let's assume we assume zero growth forever, if you want to call it that. We have enough reserves, it looks like we have roughly about $60 million in reserves outside of the $11.7 revenue stream coming in, that we will limit our exposure to roughly about a $5 million difference from $11.7 to about $16 million. Okay? So we have to make up that $5 million. And we've got $60 million in reserve with plans to replenish the reserve, but assuming none of those reserves gets replenished. Okay? If something were to happen today, we have got effectively 12 years of reserves without having to do anything. Is that right? Is I'm understanding that from the dollar and cents and cash flow standpoint?
I don't know.
So roughly, we've got 12 million?
Not quite that much. I think maybe, I would say probably more like eight.
Okay.
In a total of eight years.
And that assumes?
But I will say that because of the way we've constructed this, it's probably nine, including the capitalized interest and the current balance that we have, I would say that's probably another nine, or possibly 10, maybe 10.
Let's say 10 to make my numbers work out.
Yeah, say 10.
We've got 10 years. So the assumption is we get zero growth in the TDD, TD, the contract TDT. Zero growth in reserve, zero growth in everything that's going across the board. We get zero growth. We've got a 10-year window. A 1% growth changes that number significantly, and we've been averaging a greater than 3% growth, but budgeting on a 2% growth effectively, I think. Is that kind of how, I think you guys have done it, 2.4 or something that?
Actually, we've had the last two years, I believe, 6% growth. 0.5 to 6% growth.
But your scenario is much less.
Our scenario assumes three.
Right.
Assumes three.
So we went from $9.6 million in payment in 2009 to $11.7 in 2014, payment for 2013 year. If that, if we just maintain that difference over a very difficult time, we all of a sudden are looking at not only not having to have any exposure to our reserves, but paying it off significantly faster. And then, which case frees up more money for other projects that we can accomplish in the area. So I think it's a pretty safe risk. You turn around tomorrow.
I would say, I would say the impact to the city is remote, to begin with, particularly if we maintain what we've had just this first, in this first year. Because one of the interesting things about this, and as we've worked with it, we've probably learned a lot about it that no one but us will ever know. But, you know, you have to kind of think about that the tourist development tax for the county is, you know, between $140 and $150 million a year. Okay? A 1% growth in that number is a 10% growth for this revenue stream. And that's really the, sort of the relationship that we have to understand, is that it doesn't take very much growth in the tourist development tax for the contract TDT to have significant growth. And if we get 6% and whatever growth happens in the first two years, which we have a, we have a pretty good horizon for the first two years, maybe not six or seven years from now, but the first two years, if we get the kind of growth we have right now in the first two years, then we're way ahead of that, and disturbances will probably not even require us to dip into any of the reserve bonds. So I think, you know, the problem we had with the six cent was the immediately after So I think, you know, the problem we had with the 6% was immediately after issuing them, we had a disturbance. And that's the most difficult scenario, is that that would happen at that time.
And the other challenge is the one point, the 1 to 4. Is it possible that the county, and I don't even know to answer this question, but I'm crazy enough to ask it, is it possible that they could put some of their projects in the future in such a way that it would take away from our ability to cover these covenants that we've got bonds listed on? In other words, they decide they want to build a new convention center, they want to rebond that. Does that now take away from our ability in terms of capacity of the 1 to 4 cent?
That is an excellent question, and one that interestingly didn't really come up in any of the public meetings back in 2007. We had some discussions with mayor about it at that time. But, you know, we worked hard to convince the county that they needed to make covenants in the interlocal agreement not to do that. And in fact, there's even some approvals that we, that they have to get from us before they really do any expansion of their, significant expansion of their spending under the 2% level. Now, we know that we need to, we need to be partners in making sure that the convention center is maintained, that it becomes, it remains the outstanding venue that it is. You know, we're not saying that we're going to stand in their way of keeping that up to date. It's the, you know, that would be killing the goose that laid the golden egg in this case, and we don't want to do that. But our bondholders needed to be assured that there would not be impairment, intentional impairment of this revenue stream, but that we would all go forward with, you know, in good faith, to maintain that revenue stream so that these bonds could be serviced. And so you'll find passages in the, in the interlocal agreement that provide those assurances.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Commissioner, Commissioner Rains?
Thank you, Mayor. Good morning, Rebecca.
Hi.
Thank you so much for your presentation, but, you know, I was looking at the projected growth pattern for the contract TDT revenues that you were just showing and obviously just talking about. So you kind of really answered my question, because it appears to be very conservative. And also, what I was concerned about was the past growth pattern, you know? And how does that relate to the way that we're projecting the 3% and further?
Well, I think that the efforts that we made in our scenario for bondholders was not to project what we thought TDT would produce. In other words, what TDT revenues would be, and thereby what would be contract TDT revenues. We didn't, we didn't say what we thought that revenue stream would produce. What we said is, what is the minimum amount that would have to be produced to service the bonds? And that's where the 3% came from. Okay? So it went, I believe it went 3, 3, 1 and 1/2, and then pretty much at about 1% thereafter.
Now, you talked about how things can go bad, you know, as it relates with the TDT. But has history kind of proven that we rebound pretty quickly from the economy to have a greater outlook, if you will?
That's also a great question, Commissioner. It's interesting to note that the reduction and the succeeding rebound in both the 2001 9/11 case and in the 2008 economic disturbance case was virtually identical. And we believe that that's attributed to the fact that we have our convention traffic, but we also have a substantial amount of family vacationing traffic, and we have essentially an age, an age continuum, that that becomes appropriate. And so what usually happens is people will postpone their trips for a year or so, but they won't postpone them indefinitely. And what we see is a rebounding effect usually about 18 months or so, 18 months to two years after a disturbance. And we see that, we see, we've seen that now twice in the disturbances that we've had. So we're, we're really believing that even if we have a disturbance, it won't be the type of disturbance that Commissioner Stewart referred to in his construct to kind of see what the worst-case scenario was. What we, what we probably are looking at is a temporary disturbance, a rebound, and then plenty of opportunity to be paid back for whatever we might do temporarily.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Sheehan?
Rebecca, there's several things that I really like about the way this is structured, the fact that the reserves can be refillable if they're needed to be drawn from. I mean, that's great. Holding the extra debt service for 10 years and being able to draw from that, too. And having the four and a half years of reserve coverage is amazing. I mean, if you're going to use your car payment analogy, that's like having seven months in the bank on a five-year loan. I mean, that's really, really good. I just bought a new car, and I don't even have that. So, I mean, most of us don't have that kind of capacity. So I think that's very, very conservative methodology. It gives me comfort that this is affordable and doable, and it's really good work. And I just also wanted to say, in 2001, there's also something that contributed to that, too. We reduced the millage rate two days before September 11th. I was here on the council when we did that. We thought everything was going to be fine, we could reduce the millage rate, and then we hit the perfect storm. So, you know, I think there's a lot of things that went in that. This is a very good conservative plan. I think we're going to be able to pay this off early, and, you know, great work, y'all. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Gray?
Thank you, Mayor. Rebecca, back to the doomsday scenario. If we have to tap into the reserve, I think as a condition of the bonds, you have to replenish that, or else you're in default of the bonds, I think. And if so, how long do we have to replenish that?
We are not compelled to replenish the reserve unless there are available revenues.
Okay.
Okay? So essentially, after we do all of our budgeting for the CRA, okay, take care of all of our obligations for the CRA, budget our CRA for the year, if we have excess revenues, then that is the source that refills the reserve. If there are no available revenues, which there aren't right now, okay? There are no available revenues right now, so we could not, we would not be obligated to refill it. We only are obligated if there is, and I'll just use this term just to kind of get the technical stuff out of it, we have to have extra money in the CRA before we can do that, before we're obligated to do that.
Okay. So worst case, if we do have to go to the reserve and there are no monies there, it's not that we have to find another source to replenish that?
Not for the CRA reserve.
Okay.
Okay? What happens is, there's no contingency on the $12.5 million coming from the county.
Right.
So they would put their $12.5 million in, because, you know, that is not, that is not from available, that's already been set aside. But the, and the general fund does not, by the way, the general fund does not refill that reserve. We're at the end of the line in case everything else doesn't work. I say the general fund, I misspoke, the general credit of the city doesn't come into play until everything else is gone, and the city would never be called upon to refill that reserve.
Perfect. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Ortiz?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Rebecca, for your presentation. My question is a little different, it's about the soccer stadium and the CRA, because the CRA is not involved with the soccer stadium, yet we're going to use it as a, to support the bonds. So could you explain that in detail and how we're going to make the connection there?
Well, it's, the soccer stadium has been added to the CRA redevelopment plan, so it's a, it's a, it's a, an appropriate and legal source of spending for the CRA. So it's not that it's, it's not been set up to be a project within the CRA, but we, in our financing plan for the construction of the stadium, we did not include any CRA funding for that. All the funding for the soccer stadium is coming from other sources. The reason why I say at this time is that we don't know what opportunities the CRA might take to do some things around the soccer stadium that would benefit the CRA, you know, that would give rise to that. And that's why I've sort of caveated that at this particular time, we don't have any plans. But because of this obligation that the CRA took on in 2007 with the interlocal agreement, you know, that's kind of a done deal. The CRA must maintain this reserve because they committed to do so in 2007. So that's why we put that in the redevelopment plan, but that then also gives the CRA, the CRA Advisory Board, the opportunity to participate in projects that might be connected with the stadium in some way.
In the future.
But we, I don't know what those would be.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Rebecca. Some of the agenda items related to Rebecca's presentation will be on today's agenda, and the remainder will be on the next council meeting agenda.
Yes, sir. February 10th.
All right. That will conclude our workshop for today.